It is eight o'clock. Time for us to go over our pre-agenda for today's nine o'clock meeting. Mr. Honeycutt, will you?
Yes, sir. Be glad. Sir, good morning. I hope everybody's well. We'll start off with the Board of Equalization and Review at 8:30, and then after that, swearing in, we'll recess that. The call to order invocation would be Commissioner Barbara Acock, Pledge of Allegiance, Vice Chairman Hardison, and then Approval of the Minutes from March 16th, and Discussion and Adjustment of the Agenda. We do have some changes to our agenda. Number one, we would like to move, under County Manager's Report, we were planning to do a recognition of all of our first responders who spent the week out at the Neuse River. We want to go ahead and put them up at the front of the agenda so they could go ahead and be recognized and get back to work. So they've got a lot of things on their agenda and work to do. So we'll have that presentation first. Then also, if we look at, under Special Presentations, number six, we do not need to do that. We had a discussion at our pre-agenda workshop, and I appreciate Commissioner Foster bringing this up as well. We have the authority to what the landfill wanted to do in our current ordinance, so we have already implemented those changes as far as additional fees for outside of the county with respect to our tire recycling. So in working with our attorney, we did have that authority, so we do not need to do that. And I also believe that we, you've been handed a resolution to...
Mr. Chairman, if I might inquire, are you saying that over the past years, we have been allowing folks from outside the county to bring us tires, and we were not charging them?
Not charging for labor.
Right.
We get a refund from the recycled tires, but they're bringing lots and lots and lots of tires in, so other counties have started charging, so we're now charging as well.
And that was the reason they were bringing them, because other counties...
We're charging them, right.
...and we won't.
Yeah, so we made that.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Foster, for bringing that to our attention.
I don't really bring it to our attention, but it's just...
Yeah, it's a comment that he made, you know, we talked about. Our attorney went back and we looked at our ordinance, and we had the authority to go ahead and implement those fee changes immediately, so we did.
All right, great, thanks.
And then, in front of you is a resolution that we would walk on, that we would put under consent as well, which would be number nine under consent, Resolution approving 2021-11, Resolution requesting amendment section of the future, Interstate 42 for Mayor Chuck Allen, and we will put that as consent under, as number nine. And again, no number six, resolution under consent at number nine, and we will have our first responders really do a presentation at the first of the meeting for the week that they spend at the Neuse.
Will they be here at nine?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then we, then we have to... Then we recess the Commissioners' Meeting and convene the Board of Justice Meeting?
At 8:30.
After, after Special Presentations, yeah.
And then we'll recess, convene the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, Board of Adjustment Meeting. 9:30 a.m., we'll have our Board of Adjustment Meeting. Number one, we'll administer the OSA Office to Wayne County Board of Adjustment. Number two, public hearing to consider a variance request by Jordan Anderson for Section 70-103(c) of the Wayne County Subdivision Ordinance in order to place a resident 48 feet from the property line as opposed to 60 feet as required. The property is owned by Joanne Summerlin and is located in the Sawston Township, and there's the address and the tax parcel ID. And then we'll adjourn, and then reconvene the Board of Commissioners' Meeting, and at 9:30 a.m., we'll have a public hearing to receive public comments on proposed amendments to the Wayne County zoning and subdivision ordinances, amending various sections to comply with recent updates to North Carolina General Statute 160d, and Barry is here. This was presented at our last meeting. If you have any questions or anything from Barry at this point.
Would you allow for him to go over that again, or are you clear with it?
Clear. Mr. Chairman, per our last meeting, we were supposed to have this old business, HR, they were supposed to come back to us. Based on the salaries of the Registered Deeds, I don't see it on the agenda. It's okay. If it's not, you know, maybe we can fit it in.
I did, we got it late. I got the information from our HR on Thursday, and I emailed that out to you Thursday afternoon. What the initial thought process is, is we put it in as part of the budget discussion, but we can bring it back at the next meeting if you so request.
That's fine, yes, please.
Part of the budget or next meeting?
The next meeting would be much better.
Okay, but I hope, did you see the information?
I didn't. I had a busy schedule as well.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'll make sure you see a copy of it.
Absolutely, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, am I correct in saying, though, that any adjustments would actually be brought up with our next budget coming up? I mean...
Well, that was my thought process, because we were looking at some salary adjustments, you know, we're looking at the paying class in the Sheriff's Department, we're looking at, I think we want to look at housekeepers as well, so there's certain aspects of, you know, personnel that we were going to look at.
So when we bring it up at our next meeting, is there any action that we wanted to take?
I just, I just want to get a clear understanding, you know, as far as that particular department, where they stand, you know? That's, you know, and then from, you know, once we go into the budget side of things, we'll know where we need to be.
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you. Quick question. Yes, sir. About the zoning change, I, it's been a couple going on, so I want to make sure that I'm right. Could Barry just give us a brief review of that real quick? Thank you, sir.
You're referring to the ordinance amendment or to the, or to the variance request?
Oh, to the, okay, NCGS.
160D, perfect, okay. Yeah, this is, basically, we're required to make these changes. State statute has changed over the past year, so we have until July 1st to make changes to our ordinances. All jurisdictions are required to do this. So what we did was, we did go through, most of it, a lot of its reference changes from our old statute, which was 153, to 160D. There is an appeal period in here of 30 days if someone wanted to appeal to the Board of Adjustment. That is actually a state statute. We can't adjust that number, so 30 days, and that's a standard we've always used. It just hasn't necessarily been in the actual ordinance itself. The actual, another item that has changed is our, the way we do notice, in terms of the ordinance, we're required to post a sign at the property within a certain timeframe. We've always done that, but again, it wasn't in our ordinance, so we just made sure that was in there for any sort of rezoning or a variance request where we need to post the property, so residents around there will know and be aware of what's going on. Let me go through here. Like I said, most of it's the reference change. There's a surety bond that we have to offer in here. We typically don't get bonds or any sort of sureties like that, mainly because it's expected that all the improvements are put in ahead of time. This board requires a letter from DOT stating that the roads have been built with DOT standards, so there's an expectation that everything is installed and ready to go whenever they come to you for the final approval. So we usually don't run into that. We just have to have it in there in the event that there is a rare situation that you do have something like that.
So am I understanding that surety bonds are going to be required, currently required?
They will, yeah, they will not require, but they'll be allowed. If you decide to allow someone to move forward with a project where the road is not constructed, you can, they can be allowed to either do a cashier's check, letter of credit, or surety bond. So the surety bond's been added. So they don't have to provide a surety bond, but if you decide a little move forward, they can do that as an option.
So it's just the three, I'm excuse, it's just the three options now, they added in the extra options?
That's fine.
Surety bond, okay, all right.
In this situation, it's a state-maintained road, correct?
That's right, state-maintained road, and so...
It's not absolute, I guess.
And then the last change is regarding subdivisions. This is what the statutes call an expedited subdivision, or I call it an exception to the subdivision ordinance or to the rules. This is a new thing that the statutes are allowing over the past few years regarding larger tracts that you have, where you can split out three lots out of some larger tracts. If you're familiar with the 10-acre, you know, if you have 10 acres or more, that's exempt from subdivision regulations. This is kind of similar to that, but instead of 10, it's five acres. If you have more than five acres, you can split out three lots as an in-house review where staff reviews it. So that's been in the statutes for a few years. We need to put this in our ordinance, so it does reflect that. As I said, all these things we have already been doing and required to do, we just need to make sure it actually is reflected in our ordinance so that everyone's aware, you know, when they pick it up, what the expectations are.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, yes, sir.
And, excuse me, after the public hearing, the Appointment Committee?
Yes, sir, we have. Okay.
And then consent agenda. Number one is application for present use value, which has been reviewed and recommended by our Tax Department and recommended by staff. Excuse me. And number two, our all lovely and famous budget amendments, and I'll turn that over to Allison.
Okay, for your first budget amendment, for the detention center, they are requesting to appropriate $100,000 for additional medical costs for the detention center. This is a projected shortfall in the line item for prescription medications for inmates.
Mr. Chairman, am I understanding that, that, looking at this explanation, that the county is obligated to pay this $83,000 on this one inmate?
Yes, that's correct.
Is, we had some discussions in regards to possibly having him under house arrest versus in our jail.
I think that would be great.
The what, ma'am?
I think that'd be a good idea.
Mr. Parker, have we had some discussions with our DA of possibly having him out of our jail? At the rate that we're having to pay, we really, I think it'd be cheaper to put him up in the Holiday Inn Express.
I mean, that's unbelievable. Thanks, Chairman.
Okay, your next budget amendment is for the Health Department. They are requesting to reallocate $5,000 from salary and wages, other staff time, to printing cost. This is for COVID-19 printing of various forms that are required. For Sol and Water, they are asking to anticipate $300 in grant revenues and reallocate $415 out of their training line item, and this is for the purchase of a laptop for one of their employees. I think, I think the current laptop must be dated, so they do have grant funds that are coming in for part of that. For the Health Department, they are requesting to reallocate salary and wages, $13,329 to salary and wages other, and this is in their Minority Diabetes Prevention Program. They have a contractor who is going to be helping them out with this grant, and that's why they are requesting to reallocate the funds. For the Library, they are receiving additional Smart Start Grant Funds in the amount of $8,000, and asking to reallocate $7,178 in existing grant funds for that program to various line items to carry out the program for raising a reader. For the Health Department, they are requesting to reallocate $12,000 from salaries and wages to various other line items. This is all under the COVID-19 Enhancing Detection Program, and this is in accordance with the grant that is for that particular program. They have several of these grants, as you know, from the state. For Sol and Water, they are asking to appropriate $2,524.32 in fund balance. This is actually restricted funds that have not been carried over. They received a grant to purchase a notail drill, but the requirements of that grant, they have to actually invest the money back in the notail drill. If they rent it out to someone, then they have to put that money back into that line item for repairs and maintenance. So we're setting those funds aside. For the Sheriff's Office, they are reallocating $55,000 from fuel and diesel to repairs and maintenance. I did reach out to them about this, since this is a high-dollar amount. The fuel and diesel line item was not as high as projected this year. They have had the same usage, but the fuel prices have not been as high as was projected. So they are reallocating from that line item, but they have had several vehicles that were in vehicle accidents, required deductibles, they had to replace some motors on cars and things like that, so it exceeded the anticipated use of that line item. For Social Services, they are requesting to anticipate an additional $100,000 in administrative money for the Crisis Intervention Program, and this is for, this is federal funds, so we do have to make sure that we are in line with what they have appropriated for us. Along those same lines, you have another budget amendment from Social Services for the Low-Income Energy Assistance Program, and they are adjusting that program down by $20.92, so we do have to adjust it accordingly on our books. For the Sheriff's Office, they are requesting to appropriate $954 to special program materials in Sheriff's Fund, and this is donations received and proceeds from the sale of ads in the law enforcement calendar. For the Jet Port, they are appropriating $3,500, and, well, actually, what they're doing is separating a line item out in the jet port. They have been paying the sewer bill for Wayne Community and UNC, and then having them reimburse the jet port, but it's not being separated out in a separate reimbursement line item. So this is really to separate those line items out and allow for more transparency For the Register of Deeds, they are asking to appropriate $6,280 in fund balance for office supplies, non-capital, regular office supplies, background checks, and rental of copier equipment. This is, this was to go towards the purchase of a numbering machine for new hires and copier rental expenses and regular office supplies.
Copier expenses, there was nothing in the original budget to cover that?
Yes, sir, there was.
Okay.
They, there was budgeted funds in copier expenses, but that is a charge based on usage, so that usage has exceeded the original budget amount. For WCDAs, there are two budget amendments, and then followed by a memo. You will see one for $22,500 on page 93, and then on page 94, another budget amendment for $62,500. This is to budget for the local matches that are required for the Stormbrook Foods grants. There are two pieces to that. There's a building reuse grant and a 1NC grant. These funds are not paid out until the company meets the expected outcomes of the contract, but we do have to budget for those county matches.
Mr. Chairman, so we're not actually paying that out until they meet the guidelines in regards to employees?
They have met, this is prorated, part of it is prorated, and they're asking for an extension on the 1NC for the employees. They've had some issues with COVID with employees, getting people hired and trained, so they are going to ask for that extension, but they have met, you know, so it's prorated based on their current number of jobs, but they have met the investment requirements also of the building reuse. So there is some callback to it as well.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, was there other questions? Okay. So your last budget amendment is for the Sheriff's Office. We are asking to reallocate $10,417 from lapsed salaries, hospitalization, to the sheriff's supplemental pension. This is a requirement that was put into place by the NC Legislature in 2017, that counties would have to pay on a prorata basis, based on population, a portion of the sheriff's supplemental pension fund. That fund is also supported by fees from the courts, and the courts, as you know from the past year, have not had, have not had as many fees because there was a lot of, there was a lot of closures due to COVID. So interest earning in that fund, as well as the fees being down, all of these things contributed to there being a shortfall in the pension fund. So we are being billed a much higher amount than what we have been billed historically for this. They did find it in their departmental line item, so this is a reallocation and not a request for new monies. And that's all I have for you.
Chairman, I've got a question. Back on number 353, the Health Department, it's got $1,000. Let me get my thing out for them.
$1,000 on drugs and related supplies?
Maybe it's on...
Is that what you're looking?
Well, I guess it's $8,000 food and provisions.
Food provisions, a thousand, salaries and wages was 8,000?
No, the salary, the salaries, it is hard to see, because there's not lines. The salaries and wages are being decreased by $12,000, and then that's to support an increase of 8,000 in food and provisions, 1,000 in drugs and related supplies, and 3,000 in printing.
Okay. You're right. So the food and provisions is for...
My, I'm going to just tell you what my guess is on that. It could be where they are having to purchase meals for employees that are having to work through shifts, lunch hours, and things like that. It may also be for patients that are coming in and...
I believe it is for call center and also for those working at the vaccine center.
So that money's coming through the Health Department?
It's come through the Health Department, but that is, it can't, it is grant funded. We did check, make sure it is grant funded as well.
Okay, got you, okay, thank you.
You're right, it was 8,000. You can't see it, I can't...
Thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
If there's no more questions on budget amendments, we've got a number three, motion to approve awarding the contract for engineering, planning, and general consulting services for the Wayne Executive Jet Port to WK Dixon, subject to approval by the county attorneys. Basically, FAA requires that local airports, if you're receiving federal funding, that you have to go through the request for qualification proposal every five years. WK Dixon is our current engineering at the jet port, so that this is, we're continuing with them. We did get two qualified bidders, well, not bidders, two qualified people interviewed. The Jet Port Commission did recommend WK Dixon, and they've done a great job for us on the grants and projects that we have had out there for, so the recommendation from the advisory board is to move forward and continue with WK Dixon. Number four is motion to adopt Resolution 2021-9, a resolution adopting the 37th Amendment to the Position, Classification, and Pay Plan for Wayne County, and again, we're, the Sheriff's Department has received a grant for over $300,000 to look at jail navigation. Basically, this is to look at some wraparound services for those in jails, especially for those that may be addicted. This will fund a position from that grant, and this is a fully funded grant position.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Being a fully funded grant position, it's been my experience that generally, when we hire that person, that it's funded by a grant. Then that grant runs out, and when that grant runs out, a decision has to be made whether or not you retain that individual and increase your personnel cost or not. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So that option is there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. And number five, motion to approve the leasing space on eight communication towers identified in the public notice of March 5th, as well as unused space on county-owned or controlled buildings to Open Broadband LLC for installation and maintenance of wireless broadband services, system equipment for term not to exceed five years. And I'll let Andrew, he wants to comment on that.
Good morning. If the board remembers, approximately about a year ago, well, even before that, we've been working with Open Broadband throughout. The pilot was in the Seven Springs area in the southern part of the county, and they've slowly been expanding as part of our partnership with them. About a year ago, we entered into agreement whereby they leased space on our radio communication towers that were in place at the time. There was Grantham, Seven Springs, and the Goldsboro Tower as well. Additionally, we gave them the option to utilize any space on our buildings, so rooftops, anything like that, that would help with the expansion. There was a tiered reimbursement during that period, and it's based off the number of customers on each structure. So in short, basically, the more customers they have, based off the structure that they're leasing, the more money that we get monthly. At the time, we only did it for one year because we were actually in the process of constructing our additional radio towers, so we had another one. We had one in Nahana, and then we also had the one in Eureka. So we did a one-year lease with the intention to come back for a longer lease, and that's what's in front of you today. So the only changes is it's a five-year lease at this point. It includes those extra towers that we've constructed since then, and also the lease amounts, the rate that they're paying mirrors what Open Broadband is paying the water districts. So we have... So we basically have the same rate structure as what's been negotiated with the water districts. And Charles has been working with Open Broadband too, and they've been very good to work with. I'm sure he can give you an update on any expansion or anything like that in the county as well, but that's an overview of the lease. And it really will extend, especially, I think, that Nahana Tower, that's going to provide a lot of access, because they've been slowly trying to get up in the northern part of the county, and that's going to give them the ability to do that. Do you have anything else?
And what I really want to do is to thank Wayne County for being one of the most progressive counties in the state in terms of broadband access to their citizens. We've got equipment on the water tower where the new Dudley mobile library is going to go. We've got equipment up and ready to provide broadband signal to them. We're prepared to go on the Seven Springs EMS station, the new station down there, so that broadband can be provided in that area. Currently, we've got free public Wi-Fi being supplied to the Goldsboro Housing Authority properties. And downtown, Mount Olive, for example, during the COVID, when everybody was trying to do remote learning, had free Wi-Fi, public Wi-Fi in the downtown area there, so that students who didn't have access at home can go there and get their lessons. And I think COVID demonstrated that Wi-Fi is no longer a luxury, it's an absolute necessity because of people, students trying to learn from home and do their lessons from home, and people working from home, it's something that you have to have now. So I really am here just to thank the county for being so progressive and getting that signal out to your residents, because it's really a huge help to them. If you've got any questions, I'll try to answer those.
I got one. So explain the process of kind of getting on the list. I mean, I know, but I don't want everybody else to hear it, because, I mean, we have several in the county, especially like in the northeastern part, that's having issues in like Eureka, like toward New Hope, favorite area.
Well, they can call, and as soon as we've got equipment out there, we just put equipment up on Highway 13 near the school out there, and that's up and running. So they just need to call our number. There's an 800 number they can call. We'll survey their property and make sure that we can get a signal there to them. And then the installation's simple. It's about the size of a salad plate, I guess, that goes on their house. It's $44 a month, $130 installation fee, and $44, I think it's $44.95 for up to 25 megabytes. We can provide up to 1,000, but that's really more of a commercial service.
So you put the antenna where at? You said a school on 13? You're talking about 13 South or North?
North. It's at the middle school out there, at the water tank. We just put that up about three, four months ago.
East Wayne? Yeah, that's south.
Yes, south, okay, I'm sorry. I'm directionally...
30 minutes that way.
Anyway, that way.
I'm looking north.
Okay, I got it. So anyway, so we've got service out there now as well. And then, of course, the Seven Springs Tower, which, you know, we're real anxious to get on that, and we will provide free Wi-Fi for the EMS station out there as well.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. And thank y'all, really. Wayne County is one of the more progressive counties in the state in terms of getting this service out to their citizens, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would also like to add that former Commissioner Bill Payton, this was one of his passions, and he worked on it diligently while he was a commissioner, so this is, you know, it's been an ongoing process.
Well, you're exactly right. He was very instrumental in getting that done, and it's a huge service for the citizens of this county, so we hope to have the whole county blanketed fairly surely. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Then number six, motion to approve bylaws for the Wayne County Commissioners Council on Older Adults. I believe our attorney has reviewed those. Yes, okay. What was it? Mr. Chairman, it's probably time to go to the Board of Equalization.
Okay.
And we'll start with number seven when we come back.
Okay. Remind me, I got a question on that.
Okay, we're going to convene your Wayne County Board of Equalization and review meeting. And Madam Clerk, I think you're going to administer the oath.
Yes, sir, I will. And when you have a Bible, please place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand.
You don't understand.
And I'm going to start off and say aye, and then you will state your name. I will read this, and then just need you to say that I do or I will at the end. Okay? Everybody raise your right hand. I state your name.
I swear.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review of Wayne County, North Carolina, and that I will not allow my actions as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations, so help me God.
I will.
Is there any action, or do we just need to recess?
We need recess. The board...
Yeah, let's talk about it first, and then we'll do that, if that's okay. Good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to take a minute, explain what we're doing today, because we have some new commissioners on the board that haven't been through this. This is a statutory event that happens every year in every county in North Carolina. We open up for our board to hear appeals, anybody that owns property that wants to appeal their values. Usually on a reappraisal year, we have a lot more of these. This is not a reappraisal year, so right now, we have four informal appeals filed in our office, one residential, two commercial vacant lots, and one commercial property. What happens is they file an appeal with our office informally. We work those. In most cases, just like the residential one here, the house is very poor condition, so we can adjust those values. But once we work those, if the taxpayer is still not satisfied, then they can come before you as a Board of Equalization Review or Commissioners, whichever is sitting at the time, and you can hear their appeal and make a ruling on it. If the taxpayer is still not satisfied with that ruling, they can go to the state Board of Adjustment, and they can also go to the Court of Appeals if necessary. We have some commercial properties in other counties that actually do that, some larger businesses, but usually, we don't have that kind of stuff here. But this is sort of what we do, it's an annual process, it is statutory, and we opened it up today. We'll actually close it in two weeks, and then once they close it, no more appeals can be filed for this year, but they can go to next year. It's an annual event. So that's just a brief overview. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer questions for you.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is that my statute that it's only open for two weeks?
Well, technically, you can file an appeal every January 1st, especially January 1st, through the closing of the Board of, it's like a three-month, three or four-month period there. But this particular thing, you can keep it up as long as you want. It's usually in a reevaluation year, you keep it up longer because you got more appeals. But in most cases, you have from January 1st to the time the Board adjourns each year to appeal your value. So it's about a four-month window.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lumpkin, did you say there were eight formal reviews? Is that correct?
We have four.
Four, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Currently.
Is there anyone here today to appeal the value?
President, come in.
Other than the ones you've got?
No, sir, that should be all we have.
Any other questions? Ms. Chairman, are we to take any action today?
No, sir, especially, we just opened it up for, it's just a procedure we have to go through. You opened it up today, and we recessed it, and then we come back in two weeks, and we'll ask, any more appeals that come in Board, then if somebody's here to appeal, then you will hear that, but right now, there's nothing.
But those four that you have currently?
We are working those in our office first. Yes, sir.
And you will have some conclusion on those within the next two weeks?
Maybe one or two of them, but that's the thing I was going to mention also, as once we recess the Board of Equalization Review, then at any time after that, if we want to hear these, you can hear those as a Board of Commissioners and rule on those as a Board of Commissioners. Some of these are commercial properties, take a little longer to work, so we may not have those done in two weeks, but the taxpayer gets their due diligence.
It's confusing. So in other words, there's two weeks in which you may file?
No, there's about four months you can file.
Four months you can file, but what takes place during these two weeks?
It's just that we just, people can come in additionally.
Additionally?
This is the formal part of it. This is the formal part of the process. Informally, they can start January 1st through the end of this thing. This is just a formal opening and closing of the Board of Equalization Review.
Well, I'm trying to determine what the outcome of anyone that does, in fact, challenge the value.
What happens is, they come in our office, we work it, whether it's between this time or not, but next meeting, that's the last day they can file an appeal. Once we adjourn next meeting, no more appeals can be filed. That's the last. If somebody comes in and appeals that day, we obviously have to work it in our office first.
Right.
So what we do, we'll actually adjourn, basically what you're doing, you're adjourned the Board of Equalization Review from taking any more appeals. Once we work these appeals, then the taxpayer can come before you if they're not satisfied with our results. They come before you as a Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
You can rule on that, yes or no.
That can happen at any time.
Yes, sir. It can happen in May, June, whenever. We try to give everything, claim that death before billing.
Sure.
But they can come before you as a Board of Commissioners anytime. This is just a statutory procedure to get the process started and closed for this given year, because you don't want to be accepting appeals all during the year because it'd blow your budget all to pieces in some cases, especially on reappraisal year. So this is the formal opening and closing of the Board of Equalization Review per statute.
So that's just a two-week period we're working on right now, the equalization thing.
Correct.
The next meeting, it'll be closed, you cannot do any more.
You can't file them on your appeals. The ones that file, they're on record, so we can work those anytime.
Hear those as Commissioners if they got an appeal.
Correct, yes, sir.
Now, that's the most confusing mess I've ever heard. And I know I've done this for several years, but my question is, if you're going to have a Board of Equalization and Review, it looks like they would be the ones that would determine what the fair value of that property would be. But you're saying that actually, if they're not happy with your results, that they would appeal to the Board of Commissioners, for the Board of Commissioners to determine what that value would be?
They've appealed, they're appealing to the Board of Equalization Review because that's during this time period. The Board of Commissioners, see, in some counties, larger counties, you have a whole separate Board appointed, because they have a lot of appeals annually. You have a whole separate board.
Okay.
But in our case, and a lot of other counties, you have the Board of Commissioners sit as the Board of Equalization Review. At any time, here's a good example. Business personal property, we work those during the year, and that's like your equipment and stuff that businesses list. They don't know their value until their actual bills come out. Anytime you get a value notice, which that's what that is, you have 30 days to appeal that value. So at that point in time, this Board is closed, the Equalization Review, but the taxpayer still has a right to be heard by somebody, which at that point, would be the Commissioners. Now, in other counties that have a separate board, they would actually reopen that board and let them hear that. So if you have a separate board, it opens and closes at different times during the year. In our case, you're the same board, so you can hear either appeal as the Board of Equalization Review or as the county commissioner, either one. It's confusing. I agree with you.
Mr. Chairman?
That's our statute.
How do we let, how does the citizens know this timeframe?
This is advertised, every year, we have to advertise three times in all publications, and it's on our website as well.
Okay, thank you.
It's an annual process. It's a statewide annual process. Every county does this.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being good at what you do.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you for taking my questions.
I lost there in a turn of white, so that was my cause to doing it.
Any other questions from House?
I think it's how it said, the most important thing is, you need to stop the process so it doesn't ruin your budget.
I got that part, but I heard it loud and clear.
And that's why it's done this time of year, so you can actually settle all this stuff before your budget's budgetary times.
Any other questions? Okay, do we close the Board of Equalization?
We just recessed.
Just recess?
Until April 20th.
Okay. It's right here in front of me, I just can't read. Okay, we recessed the Board of Equalization and Review until our April 20th meeting? Do I need a motion on this? Okay, we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alan.
And... Ms. Chairman, if I might go back and ask you a question. This Wayne County Commissioners Board for the Older Adults Bylaws, are we creating a new organization here?
No, you're not. Can we, before we keep going, can we reconvene the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, sir. Reconvene the Board of County Commissioners, we're back in session.
Okay, so no, to answer your question, this isn't a new board. So Paula reached out to Borden and I maybe several months ago, so this has been ongoing. The existing board that they have, they honestly, the bylaws were so outdated, they hadn't been refreshed in quite some time. So what's in front of you today actually reflects what they've been doing in practice. So they really wanted this done before they present their budget to the board. So if you look, and I'll highlight some of the main points, so it'd be under Article 2, Section 2, and they really wanted some membership of some organizations throughout the area, so wages, DSS, and then the Social Security Administration, they've always had a representative on the board. What they've done here, they've expanded it, they wanted some representation from East Point, from GWTA, from AARP, and the Veterans Administration. So there's some mandatory membership that has to be on the board, and also, they've expanded the number of people on their board. So this is just meant to get more input. This is something that I know wages has been supportive of, and also Paula. So it's more of a refresh of the current bylaws and kind of getting them updated to a better practice. They've also, some of the people on their board have passed away recently, so they thought this was a good time to try to refresh some of that membership and get some new representation on the board.
The question I would have on that, though, is on the first page there, and that is a minimum number of 20 members on this board?
Correct.
That's the largest board I've ever heard of. Why would you have 20 members on that?
That was the request, they wanted a larger board.
That's a big board.
It says over the age of 60.
No, on the front page here, on Article 2 membership, the numbers...
I know that, but on the next page, it says all need to be over the age of 60.
Well, I agree, but still 20 people on a board.
A lot of people have doctor appointments at the same time, so...
Okay, whatever. They requested that.
They did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then number seven, motion to adopt resolution 2021-10, resolution of the county of Wayne, North Carolina, declaring its official intent to reimburse expenditures for a new Fremont Elementary School under the United States Department of Treasury regulations. Basically, this is just a reimbursement resolution. Any general fund costs that the county may incur before any debt financing for Fremont Elementary, we can reimburse ourselves. Then number eight, motion to adopt resolution 2021-8, resolution awarding service weapon to Sergeant Randy Powell. And here is Borden's dollar for that. And number nine was the resolution 2021-11 that we were walking on, resolution requesting naming a section of the future Interstate 42 for Mayor Chuck Allen. And no questions, we'll go to new business. The discussion of jail renovation contract with Mosley Architects, we do have a revised contract with Mosley. The cost did come down from 24 to, I believe, it was 18.
Well, when we asked him, he...
So this is different from what we got in our package? It's different. It's basically, it's been reviewed by our attorneys, and the biggest thing is the cost differential from 24, I think it is 18.7 now. from 24, I think it is 18.7 now. One of the things, the, during the last Facilities Committee meeting, was a discussion to look at seeing if we're looking at new cost for construction at the, for a jail, what would be the cost for renovation? So we asked Mosley, since they were kind of our architect of choice and probably had the most experience with the building now, just to really look at, see what the cost would be if renovation was an option. So that way, when we begin looking at our CIP, you've got options to look at, you know, cost of renovation versus the cost of new construction. But this was also recommended by our Facilities Committee.
But if we approve this, when, how long before they can have some, you know, figures back this?
Um, I think it's 90 days, yes. Services, number five, services will be completed in 90 days to proceed from, noted to proceed from the county, so we will let them know today if it's approved.
That's the first quarter of July, right?
Can I request that the motion also say inappropriate budget amendments, that we can appropriate the funds? Thank you.
Yeah, I thought we said the other day we're spending no more than 16,000?
Um, they said between 16 and 20, and they came back, I think, at the 18.75. I think the, the one in your agenda packet was originally at 24, 24.5.
Was this put out in a bid process, or was it just...
No, sir, this was, they were, it's kind of an addendum to our current contract. And part of that was a time issue as well, to get it moving forward as quickly as possible.
Yeah, but they're the actual, they're the architect that we have now, correct, the current ones?
They are, and, and they, they are the ones who did our bet, bet study, they also did the Kerry Winters project as well, so they, they have the most familiarity with...
Yeah, so if we go back with somebody else, it's going to be...
You'd start from scratch.
Exactly.
Well, using their stuff, but they would, their information would be, basically, I would be starting from the beginning.
What was the reasoning, I mean, what, did we cut something out, or just Mr. Freeboard and Andrew just good negotiators? No, they'd already committed to be less than 20.
Yeah, they committed, they committed to less than 20. When it came back in, we, we said, hey, you said less than 20. So they came back at less than 20.
I think around 24.5, they were going to do some things about the hazardous materials. They weren't going to be responsible for them, and now, they have now said, and on the second page, the last sentence in the first paragraph, that the owner shall provide all necessary services related to hazardous materials. So they're not doing any of that, and in fact, you don't know how much it's going to cost.
Yeah, and that could, the renovation part could go extremely...
Got you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? And then, Mr. Chairman, we, we went down and we skipped the special presentations that was after discussion of agenda adjustment. Number one would be a presentation from the Partnership of Children of Wayne County Program by Valerie Wallace, and a motion to approve week of the Young Child Proclamation presented by Blair Cox. And that's on page 19 through 25. Number two, motion to approve Child Abuse Prevention Month Proclamation presented by Cricket Davis. Number three, motion to adopt Resolution 2021-5, a resolution requesting naming the Mark Edwards Road Bridge, number 121, for the late Chief Donald M. Gray. Number four, motion to approve month of the Military Child Proclamation. Number five, presentation of Works Initiative by Wayne Community College Director of Wayne Business and Industry Center, Craig Foote. And again, we removed number six, as that did not need to, you know, we took care of that internally, was allowed under existing ordinance. And then number seven, recognition of Wayne County staff for COVID efforts. One of the things that we have done well is recognize our OES, Public Affairs, and a lot of different staff, but there's some staff out there that have really gone above and beyond and made sure that we have had representation either at the Vaccine Center, at the call site, basically every day, and, and that is the Library, Council on Aging, and the Board of Elections. So we just, you know, I don't always mention them when we thank staff, you know, we say it as a general, but I did want them to know how, you know, I wanted to specifically recognize them as well for the work that they've done, because they have gone above and beyond, and, and again, basically having people there every day from their departments. And then, going back to, to afternoon business, public comments, County Managers' reports, Board of Commissioners Committee reports, we do have a closed session today, and then the chairman.
It's almost nine o'clock. Do we need to take a five-minute break?
I do.
Okay, we'll be back, and we'll rip, open the nine o'clock meeting. Take a break.